Twenty-second at 7:00 PM, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Thank you. Fire evacuation announcement, in case of fire, there are two ways to exit these chambers. To my left, exit through the council doors, turn left and walk down the flight of stairs out towards the back, please, or you can exit right up behind you to the rear of these chambers. In either case, please, once outside the building, please move away as far away as you can from the building. Thank you. Secretary, call the roll whenever ready, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Louis Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray is absent. John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo.
Here.
Kieran Majmudar.
Here.
Ken Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Guerillo is absent. Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Nicholas Lefakis.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show that full-time member, Vice Chairman DeGray, is unable to make it tonight, so it's Christopher D'Antonio's month, so he'll be sitting in tonight as a full-time member. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approval in the minutes of the regular meeting of June 8th.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Let the record show it was unanimous to accept the minutes of the June 8th meeting. Town attorney report, there was a pamphlet left in front of you tonight, there is an update dated June 22nd. I certainly suggest that everyone, you know, read that at their leisure afterwards. Now we'll move on to public participation. At this point in the meeting, the planning zoning commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who was present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of this commission, or any matter where a decision of this commission may be pending. That also includes anything that's in pending legal activity. Is there anyone who wish to approach the planning zoning tonight? Anyone who wish to approach the planning zoning? For a third time, anyone? Seeing none. Public participation is closed. Moving on, we do have a bond released. Please, Mr. Secretary, whenever you're ready.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the release of the erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of $16,700 for Arco National New England LLC, Charlesburg representative submitted under SPR number 1826 for 113 North Maple Street, map 082 lot 0004.
Thank you. Motion made by Secretary Petronella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Majmudar. Any discussion on the motion? Is there anything staffing has added? I see our Rick did release this. We got this, so everything seems to be up to snuff.
That is correct.
Thank you very much, staff. Any discussion? Seeing none?
No.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary, for roll call.
Okay. Louis Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Kieran Majmudar.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
John Petronella is four, and, I'm sorry, who's in for Linda?
Chris.
Chris. Christopher, Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
Sorry about that, Chris.
Thank you. Let the record show it was unanimous to release this bond. I would entertain a motion at this time to move Old Business FLD 45 to be after continued public hearings, please.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky to move Old Business FLD 45 to be after continued public hearings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it was unanimous. Now we'll move on to old, excuse me, continued public hearings. PH 3063, whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary. We need to reopen this.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
First, I should entertain a motion to move this from the table, because we did table this numerous times. Is there a motion to remove PH 3063 from the table?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley. Seconded.
Seconded.
By Commissioner Holinsky. All those in favor of removing PH 3063 from the table?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it was unanimous. We're reopening this hearing. Do we really have to read a reopen?
Uh-uh.
I don't think so, because it's already been opened.
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Great.
Whenever you guys have a chance, if you can identify yourselves for the record, please.
We all set? Okay. Amy Suchent, attorney representing Chick-fil-A, the applicant before you tonight. And with me is Joey Fonseca, who is the project engineer. Just by way of background, I know you've continued this a couple of times while, since we opened the hearing on April 27th, we continued the hearing at that time because the staff was still reviewing the plans. We made a further revision at Chick-fil-A's request, actually, to make the entrance to the drive-through also dual-lane. The original submission had the entrance to the drive-through remaining one lane, but we've made that modification to address that comment. We've submitted various plans to supplement what was in the initial submission. We've also discussed various issues with staff. We've reached out on a couple of occasions to try and set up a call, but we've been unable to coordinate that. So what I wanted to do, what we wanted to do tonight, is just walk you through a couple of the outstanding issues that are raised in the staff report, because we do think that most of those information or requested items have been submitted in the materials that we have provided. We understand that the town engineer was out sick this week, and so wasn't able to offer any comments on, particularly on the retaining wall issue, but we're happy to address that subject to his further comments. So just before I turn it over to Joey, I just wanted to highlight what we see are the three outstanding issues. First of all, with respect to the two canopies, there was a question about cross-sections and renderings. We had previously shown the rendering. And also included in the application materials are elevations that do depict the height and width of the existing and proposed dimensions, so those are included. Joey has one up. It's Architectural Plan A 301 that has both the existing building and the canopy to scale, as well as the framing plan, CA 2, in your packages, has the canopy details with height and width included. As I said, the retaining wall issue was something that the town engineer, I guess, wanted to weigh in. In our position, we believe that those are construction-level details, so we'd be certainly happy that if there needed to be further review of the final wall design, that would be a pretty standard condition as part of zoning approval prior to the issuance of the building permit. What we have shown is, and stated on the record, is that that will be consistent with and match the existing wall that's out there. I don't think there's any confusion in the record that we've made that representation. So, you know, what will be built is certainly noted, and whether or not it can be, as noted in the staff report, we certainly think it can be because it matches what's currently there. And, as I said, Joey will go through the details, and we do think any kind of, given the limited nature of it, that it can be addressed, as I said, in part of the building permit submission. And then the last thing with respect to the issues on landscaping on the property, obviously the, some of the aerials have the existing landscaping shown, and Joey's going to have some more information. But most importantly, the plant, the landscape plan that you have before you and was submitted was in fact designed by a landscape architect. It's signed and sealed by that landscape architect, who is a employee of Bowler, so I think there was a question in the staff report about whether or not that had been prepared by a licensed landscape architect, and we do, you can see for yourself that it was. And in particular, that is the reason we believe what we're showing in the landscape plan and with respect to the existing landscaping and what can survive and needs to be there is both accurate and appropriate for the site. And then I think there were a couple of questions about what was shown. Your regulations require that we show existing trees. All of those are shown, both on the existing, excuse me, both the ones that will remain along the entrance drive, as well as the ones that will be removed in the area of the drive-through on the demolition plan. The last comment in the staff report was that there was a question about redoing both sides of the main drive aisle. We don't think there's any basis to do that. Joey will walk you through the details of the proposed condition on our side of the, you know, what's sort of the exit side of the drive aisle, but it's very consistent with what is currently a smaller landscape buffer, landscape area on the entrance side of the drive aisle. So, quick overview, but I'll turn it over to Joey to walk you through a lot of those details on the plan sheets and address those comments.
Thanks, Amy. Again, Joey Fonseca with Bowler. And just to, just to kind of add a little more color to the application, this plan is an updated rendering showing the changes that Amy had just discussed that were a little bit different from what the first proposal was, and that is the widening. If I can. But, okay. So the widening of the drive-through entrance here, it's highlighted in red. This was previously a 14, 15-foot-wide entrance. It's now 24 feet. It is a little bit closer to the rear of the trash enclosure, basically just what we tried to do was limit the amount of parking that was removed to, in order to widen that drive-through entrance. So with widening it, we're losing one space along this row of parks here that I'm highlighting with my mouse, and we're gaining that space back in this upper corner. You all visit the site, this is currently striped, and there's a bike rack within this space. So the proposal would be to eliminate this one space here. We would add, you know, the landscaping that was going to be impacted with the widening of the drive-through here, we'd add, I believe there's five arborvitae back along the trash enclosure. There's some additional shrubs in this thin sort of landscape strip between the drive-through and the existing parking. And then to offset the additional impervious coverage now that we're creating, this existing striped island that was just paved will be converted to a landscape island. So this would, we already had balanced the impervious coverage with the addition, with the, I guess, proposal for the widening of the drive-through lane itself by, you know, removing a lot of patio hard-scape surfaces at the rear of the building, and then also the addition of these landscape end cap islands here. So this plan before you doesn't increase impervious coverage, we're just, we're balancing it. So these modifications from the prior original application, again, it's balanced by, you know, replacing this existing striped island with some additional landscaping. So that being said, I can't figure out a zoom on this version of Adobe, but highlighted here is a dimension of 13 feet, and that dimension is from the curb line to the wall that is being proposed along here. And the reason why I want to highlight that is, under the existing condition, and I'm going to go to an aerial real quick, this is how it exists today, just a single lane. You've got, you know, approximately, I think it's about a little over 20 feet of width here in landscaping. And then on the opposite side, there's about a 13-foot-wide landscape strip, which just contains, you know, some trees you can see here, the same trees that are on the other side, sort of mirror that, along with some additional shrubs, et cetera, through there. Under the proposed condition.
But if I may.
Correct.
That's not 20 feet of level land. That's 20 feet of a severe slope.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, it's a little bit, it's level at the trees, and then it drops down towards the drive-through, correct?
I didn't even, I just wanted to get that.
Sure, absolutely. And you can, it's hard, maybe a little bit hard to see here, but you can see how it drops off towards the drive-through side. So just going back to this layout, so this highlights the three trees that are along the drive-through expansion area and the canopy here. It's about 10 feet from the existing trees to the wall. Now, this wall is being tied into the existing wall that is there on site. Where we're connecting to the existing wall is about 4 feet. That's the max height, so it's still considered a gravity wall, segmented wall, it's going to match what's there today, but the max height where we're tying it is 4, and then from there it drops down to 3 feet, down to 2, and then, you know, basically at grade plus or minus a foot here at the end. So we're about 10 feet from where this gravity wall will be installed, and again, there's no, it's not a structural wall, so we're not anticipating tiebacks or any geogrid that's going to go behind it. It's going to basically be constructed the same way the existing wall along Hazard Ave was constructed, which is along here. And looking back at some aerial images from prior to the construction of the Chick-fil-A, these existing trees that exist today were there prior to the construction of Chick-fil-A, and that wall that exists today was constructed in front of these trees, which is, and it's a little bit closer, we're about 10 feet, these are about 8, you know, there's a tree close at the entrance, about 6 feet from the wall, the rest of these are about 8 to 9 feet from the wall. You know, that wall was put in, constructed, and these trees are still there today. So I know there was a question of, you know, the construction of the wall impacting the trees. In our opinion, you know, we're 10 feet away, we're still outside the tree canopy there. We don't feel that those trees are going to be impacted by those trees. I'm talking about the trees that are along the curb line. There's certainly some existing vegetation closer to the drive-through lane, existing drive-through lane, that's going to be removed, and we provided a landscape plan to staff to highlight the proposed improvements along the drive-through and elsewhere on the site. The one other comment that we heard was regarding the telephone service. There's an existing telephone line that kind of sort of parallels the electric service that runs to the building. It's highlighted here, it might be light on your screen in blue. The existing service was close to the trees when it was installed, and then it sort of turned into the telephone box that's up here in this corner. We're proposing to just slide it out of the retaining wall design. This isn't a major utility, it's just a telephone service, so we're not expecting there to be, you know, a major excavation there. We don't expect that it's going to impact any of the trees that are along the drive aisle here. And I think it's just another, as Amy mentioned, maybe it's a condition that, you know, once, as the retaining wall is being constructed, if we feel that there is space behind the wall, they can install this telephone line, it'll be installed there. If it can't, they can easily install that, while not preferred, you know, within the drive-through lane, but there's options there to get the telephone service to not be impacted by the wall design here. And I think that's really it. The lighting plan hasn't changed from the previous presentation that we had. Yeah, I think that's basically it. Happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you. Are you all set? Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Higley. Vice Chairman Higley, sorry.
It's okay. I had a question on the widening of the drive-through from 13 feet to 24 feet by the compactor?
Yes.
Well, the trash, whatever it is. Do the doors open at the end of the trash enclosure or at the side where the drive-through is?
They open on the opposite side of the drive-through.
Okay, so.
So where I'm highlighting with my mouse here, they open towards a parking lot. They don't open towards the drive-through.
Right, so that the person coming in to empty wouldn't be on the side closest to the drive-through?
Correct.
They'd be on the other side?
Correct, they'd be on the side.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Alamo?
Are you going to be able to remain open through this whole process?
I believe there is a quick shutdown for all this, these, the reconstruction of the drive-through, the canopies, there will be some time that the store is going to be closed, but they do these mostly weekends, Sundays, to sort of make up for that time, but there will be a period that the store will be closed.
And the other thing I had on that phone line, couldn't you just install some conduit underneath that wall?
It could be.
Just so they can snake it through?
As they, because we're not sure what the depth of that telephone service is today, but that could very well be.
And they can use it whenever, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Holinsky?
Yeah, I had a question about the entrance, as it's shown there with the arrows, you know, before the canopies start.
Correct.
There are times when I've noticed that you're really busy, and I would anticipate you're going to see two rows of cars filling up that driveway, that portion of the driveway. I was wondering if you might consider putting a solid line down the middle so that people are not trying to cross over, you know, like you'll see, oh, that side's faster, I want to zip over there, or something like that. You know, once you're in, unfortunately, what it does is, is once you're in one line, you stay in that line regardless. But I was just concerned that there might be some back-and-forth changing lanes there, and I wondered if something could be done about that.
Sure. As part of the standard Chick-fil-A rollout for all of these double drive-throughs, there is a solid stripe. In fact, there's now a 3-foot-wide striped island in between the two lanes, and that allows team members to be in there, so there are two distinct lanes.
Okay.
That you will be in. And that is from start to finish. It's a little light on this land, but it is start to finish.
Okay.
Except post pickup window merge as you go.
I was more concerned about the entrance part.
Correct, yeah. So it starts from the entrance.
The dark gray part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it starts here, and this will all be two separate lanes until you merge.
Okay, so it would not be striped out to the access road or access driveway there?
Oh, you're saying up here?
All the way down, I'm thinking, from there to, yeah, right in there, yeah.
Yeah, this would remain as it exists today. So this would not be striped, it would only be within the drive-through lane itself. And part of, you know, part of these improvements is to reduce that queuing stack, you know, outside of the drive-through entrance. Obviously, with the lane expansion, you've got some additional queue cars in here, as well as, you know, two cars at the drive-through opening as well, as that's a current pinch point.
Okay. I would just suggest that you might want to consider doing something there to indicate that you can't switch lanes, or you should not be switching lanes.
I'm not sure. Bye-bye. Yeah, I can speak with, I can speak with our client and see if there's, I know that in some cases they have dedicated a, albeit, like a drive-through striping that indicates drive-through lane versus through traffic.
Sure.
And I could certainly speak to our client.
Okay, great, thank you.
If they wanted to hear.
Go ahead, Commissioner Alamo. I'm sorry, I had one more. How's the food served to the outside lane in a drive-through?
So there are team members that, as part of this application, the current pickup window that exists today will be converted to a door that will open, it'll operate as a window, it's kind of a half-door, it can operate as a window on off-peak times. During peak times, it'll open fully to allow team members to enter the drive-through lane. There's specific striping within the drive-through lane for crosswalks where the team members will cross into that outside lane. And as I mentioned before, there is a 3-foot striped island between the two lanes within that entire drive-through lane that allows the team members to be within it, and they're delivering meals at outside lane. So during peak times, there'll be team members out here delivering to, you know, multiple cars at once.
So from what you're showing us tonight, is this a model that they use on other places that works okay?
Yeah, this is the current standard across the board. Obviously, this store was constructed back in 2015, and it's only gained in popularity since, and what they've seen over the years is, you know, this model works, and it's certainly been the current prototype now for, I'd say, about two or three years.
So relative to safety for those team members that are going out there crossing, I'm sure there's some internal policies or safety precautions if they're.
Training.
Training, yeah.
You're not the first commission to ask about that.
Yeah.
And in fact, I think once you see an operation, it makes a lot of sense, but in fact, that's one of the things, everybody, all the team members, you know, they have protective reflective vests.
Right, so.
There's Chick-fil-A training for any team members that are working outside, so all of that is handled, because as Joey said, it's been the store model for prototype for several years now, so they have a dedicated sort of operations and training program on how to operate that.
Good, yeah, good, that's good. I was just thinking about a little safety, but I'm sure, they're a great company, so I'm sure they have all the internal processes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm glad you're still on this slide, since I know the drive-through area very well. So I would like to go back and talk about the wall. I mean, you're saying, originally when I first saw the plans, it didn't look like the wall was going to be tapering to the north, but it sounds like now you're going to taper the wall to the north?
It is. The grade, the greatest is the highest around that corner.
Yeah, right.
And then it goes, and then the grade tapers off. So, yeah, the highest at 4 feet will be around this corner, and then it tapers down, and there is a rendering that's highlighted.
So your goal, so just in my non-engineering mind, your goal isn't to bring the wall up so that it's level with the highest point of that taper.
Correct.
You're going to still, it's still going to be tapered.
Correct.
It's just not going to be 20 feet of taper, it's going to be more like 8 feet of taper.
Correct, yeah. That grade will still drop to the wall, but it'll be retaining, as you can see in this image here, about on the right, yeah, my mouse here, this is about a foot here where we're retaining, there'll be, you know, a cut wall here, and the grade above it will remain as it exists today, but it'll just be a cut wall there. So we're not regrading behind the wall, sort of between the wall and the trees. We're trying to preserve as much, you know, existing landscaping as possible.
And that's why you're saying, that's why you believe you'll be able to save the trees?
Correct.
Okay, so if you, okay, so basically you're not going to be doing, what I would say, a full retaining wall.
Right.
It's just a, we're still going to be a taper all the way down, okay? One of the things that staff did mention is the fact that, and I'm so glad, if we can go back to the slide where the islands that the Commons owns, where you were actually, you've gotten approval from them to be able to plant on that so that we can have our justification for landscaping. But one of the things is that in the application, I didn't see anywhere, and I'm just going to read staff's comments, I'd be making them up, the off-site landscaping, there was a question with regard to the applicant's obligation to maintain. So who's going to maintain those? You guys, or is the Plaza owner going?
So there is an agreement between Chick-fil-A and the Plaza owner that was entered into as part of the consent. My understanding is that that agreement covers maintenance. I have not seen it.
Okay.
But my understanding, because that was a negotiation item.
Sure.
Before, I can find out the answer, is the short answer, but I know that there wasn't a dissection.
We need that as part of the record.
How to do that.
We need that as part of the record, so if you can produce that.
Sure.
That would be great, thank you. And the only other thing I'm just going to add is, it's been an ongoing process for a few months now.
Yes.
We do have till July 27th.
You do.
I'm not saying we want to use up till July 27th, I'm just, certainly, I don't want to act on this tonight without our town engineering reviewing things, to be quite frank with you. I've known John a long time, I trust him, I want to see his comments.
Right.
I just want to just lay that right out for you right now before we continue.
He understands.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other questions? Chris?
Yeah, I want to ask, you mentioned about your unstriping one of the parking spaces to expand the entrance, and then relocating that space to the other side. What about the bike parking you mentioned that's there? What are the plans to replace that or move that elsewhere?
It'll be relocated towards the rear of the building in this existing landscape.
Okay.
There's a landscaped island here that we're going to be moving that bike rack to, so we're going to keep that on site.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, so again, just for the record, what some of us who know the restaurant, what I would say, the patio that's there now is pretty much going to be ripped up, so that's all going to be landscaped?
Correct.
So it'll be no more, be no more outdoor eating at the facility?
Correct.
Good. Good.
John?
Yeah, where the order is being taken, there's, the orders are being taken through machines or kiosks and so forth, right? So there's no employees or attendants out there? Is that what I understand?
Depends on, so, so back to the staffing. So if you were to come at an off hour when there isn't a need for all of the staff outside, you'd order like you would normally at the, the order board. But if in fact this was a situation where the, the full dual lanes are, there are team members out there taking orders on iPads to basically expedite what's happening at the, at the order window.
Okay. So in, in key times, you're going to, when you open up both lanes, you're going to have people out on, on both ends taking orders and then also distributing them?
Right.
Okay. And, and you say only peak times, and normally when that's not open, you're just running one lane and the other lane's blocked off?
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. And off-peak is typically breakfast. There's not a lot of heavy volumes that go to breakfast. That's, that's typically their off-peak. But if, if you visit the site today, there's, there's team members out there. They're, they're operating, like to say, granted, it's just a single lane out there. But yeah, during peak times, it will be team members. And again, that just helps the overall efficiency of the drive-through to reduce. And that's, again, something that they've learned, certainly, you know, post-COVID, but leading up to this, that allows them to be successful with the, the dual lane operation from start to finish, where they weren't, you know, having that as part of their prototypical layout, you know, a few years back.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Well.
May I?
May I?
Yes.
May I?
All good.
Yeah. Thanks. One of my other main concerns, and probably I want, should have mentioned this right off the bat, was the actual merge of the two cars into one car. One lane, excuse me, two lanes into one lane.
At the exit?
At the exit. And even now, that, that exit out back into the Plaza is difficult. I'm trying to watch my words here very carefully. Difficult exit as it is. I don't want to say it's dangerous, but if you're not careful, if it wasn't for that mirror there and other courteous drivers, I, there would be a lot of accidents in that exit from the restaurant back into the Plaza. And there's not a lot of feet for the merge. I don't even know if there is one whole car length for the merge. There might just be a car length since you're not moving what I would call the electrical box, since you don't want to do that, when I, I certainly understand why you wouldn't want to do that. It's, of course, if you did move that and move that exit lane, that would be too closer towards the entrance to the Plaza itself. What concerns me about this whole plan again is, is that, and there's not, and I know there's not much you can do here, but I would like to hear your response on it. It is a, a concern.
Sure. So with the team members being out within the drive-through lane, two cars aren't being like sort of, sort of released at the same time. The team members are, you know, handing the meals to, to lane one, then team member will hand the meal to lane two. Lane two will be, will be asked to, to move forward, to exit, and then lane two will be behind them. So they, there are team members out there, they're actually, you know, directing the drive-through traffic so that they merge properly. It's not just drivers trying to, you know, squeeze in like, you know, we would if we're in a rotary or something like that.
Right.
The team members are out there directing who's leaving at what time, and it's all, it's all done by the meal delivery side. So there's not all cars leaving at the same time.
So when, at, when, when you place your orders, if both lanes are open, because I know a lot of times both lanes aren't open, and it's probably not till around 11 o'clock or 11:30, they open up both lanes. So you, if the both lanes aren't open, you wouldn't have any T, T people out there. So basically what you're saying is only when two lanes are open, there'll be T people out there delivering, and at that time, there are also lane police, lack of a better term.
Traffic director.
There you go. I like that. That's very nice. I like that.
Yes, because they, they wouldn't be delivering any meals at outside lane when they're operating in an off-peak time. So they would only be utilizing this inside lane.
Right. So when, so it's a unified, unified effort right from the beginning to the end.
Correct.
Okay. And the other, last question I have, I'm sorry, Frank. The last question I have for you for tonight is, and just be hypothetical, and we, hypothetically, we approve this, you go ahead, you start the construction, and gosh darn it, on that wall area, you do discover issues. It doesn't go as planned. So what, what is your backup plan at that point?
I think that's when we would, we would have to come back to, to the commission and review what our, what our alternate plan would be there, and we would, we would, I, we're anticipating that since it isn't a very large excavation, a large, a tall wall, it's just gravity, that, you know, we're not, but we're certainly, we'll certainly, you know, be amenable to, to coming back, and we would have to.
Yeah.
Come back and, and, you know, update staff on, on the conditions of that wall and what the, the final design looks like and how that may or may not impact some additional landscaping. I think we would have a plan in place for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Chris Schramm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious and wondering, has the industry, the fast food industry, since the pandemic, is there more drive-through now? Nobody goes back in any, so everybody kind of got used to staying in their cars? Is that what's happening?
Dramatically.
Really?
Dramatically.
Really?
Across, and Joey can speak for his work too, but this is something I'm seeing throughout all of our restaurant clients. You know, Starbucks has a longer drive-through. Chipotle's coming up with a store that has a drive-through. I think it's Taco Bell. Somebody else has one where you don't even, you know, it's like another mobile type order. So it is 100% industry-wide to the point where it is a disproportionate amount of customers that are coming through the drive-through compared to the, you know, pre-pandemic where somebody might go in.
Wow.
But yeah.
Interesting.
Definitely the majority are coming through the drive-through.
It's also third-party deliveries.
That's right. You have all the, right. That's right. Yep. So yeah, so nobody's getting out of the car anymore.
Right.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Let me just get the one piece of business out of the way. You guys, you don't have to get up. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this application for a third time, seeing that that's done? Does staff have anything they want to add tonight to this?
Just a couple of things real quick. First of all, I appreciate the presentation. The, the challenge here has been that the, the area available to, to do the scope of work, it's, it's pretty tight, to, you know, use layman terms. So what we've tried to do is make sure that the commission understands what they're being asked to approve, and so you can evaluate the plan in terms of the findings or the criteria that you have in your regulations for special permits. So if you, if you look at the landscaping, and it is a special permit, it's not a site plan, so you have the ability to ask for more detail if you think it relates or you think it's necessary for you to, you know, evaluate the application properly and make a decision. So in terms of landscaping, typically what we would see is, we would see in, in a plan view, an existing and proposed condition. So you would see all the existing landscaping, including the shrubbery and, and all the other surface materials, and you would have the proposed condition, which would say, "to be removed, to be removed." Now, i- if you've reviewed plans, you can interpret what they have. I think it's fairly obvious for us at least to understand that the, the developed condition is really going to be limited to the, I think it's three trees? Three or four? I don't know the exact number, but, so we just want to make sure that you understand what that's going to be. So then we get to the kind of the survivability of what's going to remain.
Yeah.
Which is obviously always a concern. Applicant certainly feels that the trees will survive. We've raised issues about the telephone line in the trench. We don't know the depth and the width, some of these things like this. So we're, we're not completely confident that they are going to survive. So what we could probably have from the LA, if it helps, and I think it would, is, is an opinion about the survivability of the trees. You know, something explicit and specific to the survivability of the trees from an LA, and you got one on staff, so that's great to hear. Probably some kind of report post-development after some period of time from the LA. Bonding. We, we also need to understand what the replacement plan would be in the event that they don't, one or more don't survive. Are they going to be replaced in kind? That kind of a thing. That would be helpful to have that for the record as well. So I think we're getting to the point now where we're kind of figuring out the landscape part of it. Just want to make sure that you guys understand what you're being asked to approve. So that's that. And on the wall, we've gone through multiple iterations and conversations about the wall. And I think we've finally gotten to a point where we have a handle on the height, where they're going to start the connection, the taper that's going to come down, and we've gone through a couple of iterations of the detail for the wall. And I think we finally got to something, I, I hope, when John reviews it, he feels comfortable with the installation. There was a prior version that had, had tiebacks, and it did have some parts of it that went deeper into the slope. So now we're kind of back to just a stack kind of gravity kind of wall, which is good. I mean, that's going to be very, very helpful. In the supplement that I gave you, that I handed out tonight, I just wanted to make some reference to the special permit criteria so you can kind of understand how this all relates. Usually on a wall, we wouldn't ask for that level of detail because typically you have a lot more room to do the wall. So getting it, getting, getting more detail at the building permit stage is pretty pro forma because you typically have enough room to install the wall. Here, we were concerned that, you know, we needed to really understand the wall with the amount of space that was available to do it. So I don't know if the commission, just throw it out there, I don't know if the commission wants any supplemental landscape to replace some of the landscape that's being removed. I'll just throw that out there for you to consider. If you do, you do. If you don't, you don't. But think about that, because what you will have is you'll basically have that 10-foot section with, you know, the three or the four trees that are existing, and hopefully they survive. And then if they don't survive, we'll, we'll have some understanding about what you might use to replace those. Lastly, we threw out the idea of both sides of the drive. We understand that raises some kind of complications, but they would have to go back to the Plaza owner to discuss that. There's obviously another tenant that has a building on that side who might have some concerns about things. We don't think that's completely necessary, but just understand that if the trees, one or more of the trees don't survive, you have existing mature growth on the other side that is a certain scale and a certain aesthetic, if you want to call it, serves a certain purpose. And you need to replace vegetation on this side for at least some period of time. You may have a kind of awkward, disorderly-looking main access drive to the Plaza. So just want you to be aware of that. Other than that, really don't have any concerns about the double access. I understand Mr. Holinsky's point. I think it's a good point that, you know, we don't want to have people competing and creating confusion, safety issues within the parking field. But I think they know how to run their business. I think they've done it in many, many places around the country and elsewhere. So we're, we're not really concerned so much with, with how that will operate. So if we can continue to July 13, we'll have John, when he gets back, review everything. Hopefully, he'll be okay, and then we can hopefully wrap it up on the, on the 13th.
Thank you. And I think you bring up two good points. That was one of the reasons about the trees and the wall. Again, that's a, that's a mature root ball in there with those trees, and now you're getting rid of eight feet or so, and you're going to, guaranteed, you're going to be cutting into some of the root ball for those trees. So hopefully, they can survive, and that's one of our concerns. Matt, you mentioned supplemental landscape. You mentioned supplemental, can you expand a little bit more on that?
Well, the only reason I bring that up is that the existing landscape area, which is obviously about double the width of what you'll end up with, has a number of shrubs, flowering shrubs, and there's some.
Flowers.
Some, you know, blue rug junipers or other kinds of surface treatments. If, if that's something that you think you might want, then you should think about that. Again, the other side has what it has, and I think it's pretty much limited to the three trees, you know, on that side. So, you know, you do, you do, you do want, you know, both sites to be, you know, relatively the same, I, I think. I don't know. Maybe it's a matter of opinion, but that's the only reason I bring that up.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Chris Schramm, you want to?
Yeah. I think I want to go back to the supplemental Plan B for landscaping. The question I have is, do we really need by our regulations, the number of parking spots that they are currently showing at the site plan? Is it possible to not have as many and instead use one or two for landscaping as part of the current or Plan B site plan?
Yeah. I don't have the parking table in front of me, but I think we're.
We don't.
I think we're pretty close to what we need.
We're, we are, as, as the, for the overall Plaza, we are at the required parking.
Yeah.
So we, we don't have, which is why part of what we were doing when we were revising and, and making sure, the, the overall Plaza is also non-conforming with respect to impervious coverage. So that was why when Joey was talking about, you know, balancing the, the new pavement with the additional landscaping areas, we're trying to make sure, number one, it's balanced, and it's a very slight reduction in the impervious. Not dramatic, but, but at least I think it's about 130 or so square feet, which is what we accomplished with the additional. So if we, we literally, in the overall Plaza, do not have a parking space left to give.
Too many parts of this parking space throughout this Plaza as well as many other towns.
Yes. I agree with you.
Half of it is empty, and then only the three stores that are really anchor stores. Everything is packed, and everybody wants to go there.
Correct. Yeah. That, that, I mean, having looked at both the Plaza when I've been here on the weekends myself, in some of the historical images, you know, looking back at the construction and some of the questions that have come up, I mean, certainly along Hazard Avenue, the most of those spaces aren't used, but if you want to amend your regulations, we'd be happy to put more parking, or more landscaping in. But at the moment, we're, we're right at the required minimum.
Okay. The second issue I wanted to address was the maintenance or save the existing trees. Is some kind of a report during construction, be of some help to the planning staff, planning department, so that we understand that, yeah, they have to dig too far or too, not too far, and therefore looks like we don't need a Plan B?
So we're talking about the kind of area of the wall? That's really the only area?
Some kind of progress report that we have excavated so much and looks like the trees will not be affected or will be affected.
Right.
From the applicants.
Right. Yeah. The, the, I mean, we could set up the special permit in any way you'd like. I think that's a good suggestion, maybe sometime during the construction period that the LA renders some kind of an opinion. He's out there reviewing it, he looks at it, you know? And then some period post-completion, and we, you know, we hold the bond, and then, you know, we get some kind of final sign offer, okay, that type of thing. So it's kind of a combination of, but that could certainly be included.
Yeah. I'm just trying not to have that cycle of coming back here for.
Sure.
No, we don't want to back here. No. 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 We like them, but we, we don't really want.
They don't like us that much. But I think on that point, if, you know, certainly if the request is to have some supplemental landscaping beyond what we've shown for the impervious, when we go back to the landscape architect, if you want us to add more landscaping than what was shown outside the area that we're talking about, so, you know, under these existing trees, we can certainly, you know, ask what, you know, if it's some of the low, low junipers or whatever else, we could, we could expand that if that was something that the commission wanted. But like I said, I think we, we do think the trees, as Joey explained, we think those should be okay. And there's notes on the plans about how to do construction and, or on the next sheet. But we can certainly have the, you know, get a letter for the, for the next meeting from our landscape architect to that effect.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Ficus?
I think that if you were to dig under the trees to put something below, you'd be damaging the roots of the existing trees, and it probably wouldn't make sense. But I have a question for council. In this illustration, there's a little garden here, and I was wondering why it was put here rather than here, so that it would be a continuous green space? Because I've noticed that plants in parking lots that are in a small garden tend to-
Die.
Die.
Die faster than plants that have more root area. So I was wondering if that spot could be swapped here, so that this stays parking, and that area is absorbed here.
Sure, I mean, we can, well, so you're saying replace a parking stall with, with the landscaping? Is that what you're saying?
Since the location-
Yes, so that, that location where the landscaped island is, is currently striped pavement. It's not a parking stall. So if we were to do that, we'd lose one spot, so we'd be under, because right now, we're meeting the minimum parking requirements for the overall plaza, so we'd be short a space doing that. We chose that because that was an existing striped island there. And really, that was our only opportunity to not remove any additional parking and make up the difference with the widening of the drive-through entrance there. I will say, all Chick-fil-A operators take pride in their sites and the cleanliness and the landscaping. You know, they'll, they'll be cared for, and I believe the site is irrigated, so there will be irrigations there, irrigation there. And, you know, they're typically replacing any vegetation that's dead and replacing the kind with what the original plan had. So I understand what you're saying. In this case, because we're being sensitive to the impervious coverage, we selected that as, as existing impervious coverage that was going to be converted to landscaping. And I also wanted to just point a couple of points that Matt was discussing earlier. You know, the, as I mentioned early in my presentation, this wall that's along Hazard Ave. and the trees that are along here, you know, this wall, and again, every application's different, but, you know, when this was constructed, it was a deeper excavation than what we're doing on the, on the side of the building. But I'm sure that, you know, part of that original application was to, you know, to save these trees, and they're still there, they're still, they're still thriving, and we expect the same to be on the, on the side as well. The landscape plan does show existing vegetation that's more of a light shade, and the proposed vegetation more of this darker bold. The vegetation that's going to be removed is on the demolition plan. If we were to have everything on this one landscape, it wouldn't be too messy. So the demolition plan does call out which trees are going to be removed, which shrubs are going to be removed. And lastly, junipers and all the low shrubs, all of that could potentially be relocated as well. They don't have to be. The trees will likely not survive if they're transplanted, but I would imagine some of that low juniper shrubs can be transplanted and certainly used within that area to sort of match what's on the opposite side without having to, you know, plant new material. So it's already there. It's grown. I think every effort will be made to save as much vegetation as we can there.
Thank you. Are you all set, Nick? Commissioner Laimo, do you have another question?
You mentioned, we had a lot of discussion about the wall. You said a gravity wall rather than tiebacks. Can you just educate me a little more?
So, yeah, so the comment was, the, so the original, the original, I guess, application for this, the initial application for the Chick-fil-A, had what's called just a generic retaining wall detail. Typically, those walls are designed by a structural engineer or the wall company itself, the vendor. We have, it's a standard retaining wall detail. It does show tiebacks. There are notes that, you know, all of this is pending a structural design, you know, review, but it's more of just kind of an all-inclusive detail there. It's not really an actual design of the wall. That was included in our original plant site, just to say, this was the approved detail back for the construction of the restaurant. We're going to be using that same wall, that same detail, and applying it to the remainder of this wall. What we did on this final, last submission that we just had, was include the actual, like, Unilock detail for the gravity wall. So four feet and under, typically just, that's considered a gravity wall. It's just stacked stones with, you know, there's stone on the backside, there's some weep hole similar to what's out there today. The highest portion of this wall is four feet. It quickly drops down to three feet and down to a foot at the end. So it's just your sort of standard gravity segmental wall that's there, and it's the same wall that exists along the backside.
Thank you. And the other question I had, and you mentioned irrigation, so I was going to ask, the concern about the trees, maybe run some irrigation lines through that wall, again, like I was talking about the phone line, and get some irrigation out there around those trees.
Sure, I have to verify that this location has irrigation, but sure-
That would help, I mean-
Yeah, if not, there'll have to be a wiring plan in place for, to make sure those trees are getting-
Because, you know, before you, you could run all the different conduits and, you know, be upfront and advance on those things and, you know, stake them through the wall, whatever you need to do. You can get creative with the wall. They want more landscaping, do something on top of the wall, you know, make it nice and pretty. So I'll leave it up to you, but I think there's options. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to kind of summarize here. I know, I think we all have a little, some task items to do. I know that we're going to be waiting for staff to review some things and our town engineer to review. There was, basically, we would like to have the LA opine on the plan for the tree survival, and also to come up with staff about some type of referral as a project's going along as a condition of those trees. You are also going to get that contract agreement you had there about-
Yeah.
Thank you. And I would like to see you at least respond in a letter form, I'm not sure it needs to be in plan form, about supplement the landscape, about saving some of the-
Sure.
-the shrubs that you mentioned that are going to be in that area that's being dug, if possible. And even if, I don't know if we need to actually have it on the plan, but at least opine on that in a memo format, at least for us to have. I think I've covered all the items for now. So having said that, I will entertain a motion to keep this public hearing open and to table this item for the next meeting, which is July-
July 13.
July 13, lucky 13th on a Thursday.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, is there a second, and by Commissioner Madardar, to keep this public hearing open and to table to the next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. But the record shows that it was six, nothing unanimous, and Commissioner Laimo stepped out. My little stay there, because we're going to go on to Flood 45. Whenever you're ready, we now have, and this basically is a site plan review, it is not a, it is not a public hearing.
Yes.
FLD 45?
Yep. FLD 45, 25 Hazard Avenue, application for food permit, Chick-fil-A Inc., Paramount Commons at Enfield LLC applicants, Paramount Commons at Enfield LLC owner, map 45, lot eight, BR zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant and representatives here? Please, for the record, again.
We are here again. Amy Suchens and Joey Fonseca, and this is all Joey's show, so.
So just a quick update from, on that application. The flood elevation here is 114, and it is, so this is the existing additions plan. So highlighted in yellow, yes. Oh, sorry. Yep. Highlighted in yellow here is the flood contour elevation, and it sort of wraps through the building around the front and then at the entrance of the drive-through. All of the work that's being proposed is above that elevation. We're not, we're not doing anything below that elevation. So there is no filling of this. There was a bit of regrading of the drive-through entrance as we looked at it. It was close to that flood elevation. As we looked at it, there was no need for it. It was, it was post-merge point there, so we've removed that. So we aren't filling, we aren't, you know, displacing any additional floodwaters inside of that elevation. Everything is upstream of that. So we're not touching within that flood elevation contour.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner, I'm just to fill you, because I know you had to step out. We went on to FLD 45, which is their flood application for the little four-foot area that intervenes on the flood, and they just gave us a presentation showing us on the map where that was.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for the applicant on this? Does staff have any questions or want to comment on this?
No, I think we're just waiting for John Kabibow to give us a final sign-off on this. We don't have any concerns whatsoever. It's obviously de minimis at best.
Commission, have any questions on this one? So we still haven't gotten John's comments based on this one.
We can wrap this up on the 13th.
We can. So I will entertain a motion to table FLD 45 to the next meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion on a motion? Seeing on, all those in favor tabling FLD 45 to the next meeting signify by saying aye. The record shows unanimous, seven, nothing to table. Listen, we'll-
We will see you on the-
We'll see you in the next meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, I'm sorry for anyone in the audience we probably should have announced earlier. PH 3069, Nine Manny Road will not be heard tonight. That's going to be heard in the next meeting. The applicant was not able to make tonight.
Why does this keep? No, this, I've been, something with the-
Do we need to table that, or just, we just leave it on the agenda? I'm not going to formally table Nine Manny. I don't think, we didn't open it.
No, we just opened on the-
Okay, thank you. Give us one second here, gentlemen.
We're just looking at the applicant, the master packet. We're having a problem getting, I don't know if anybody else can't get beyond this.
We're just discussing in the master packet online. You can't get beyond this application. It reloads itself. It won't let you go any further.
Are you having that problem?
I had it at home last night, yesterday, and I just, Commissioner Holinsky did the same thing. It just, you can't get beyond Chick-fil-A.
Just give us one second, please. Because people are using their iPads here, you know, instead of papers, so we want to see if we can-
The other thing is, you know, people at home having the same issue with it, or not. I tried several times yesterday.
How were you, Kenny? Were you able to?
You haven't got there yet.
I'm not there yet.
Okay.
So I did have that, the same issue. I opened in Acrobat on iPad. Those are installed. It seems to be all right in Acrobat, but yeah, if you open it in Safari or-
I'm opening it on the town-issued iPad on the town website.
So can you make that note? Need to report that to IT, that we're unable to open our master packets on the iPads?
Yeah, I think, I think it's the size of those-
It's got to be the size of it.
It's slowing up the local memory, I think.
Yep, yep.
It opens for me, but it's very slow.
But if you try to go beyond, if you try to go beyond this application, it just reboots you.
You have your paperwork, sir?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. We're going to move on, we're going to move on to-
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
PH 371, 210 Moody Road. Mr. Secretary, whenever you're ready?
Yep. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, June 22, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 306, or I'm sorry, 3071, 210 Moody Road, application for subdivision, Topknot LLC, applicant owner, map 100, lot 11, I-1 zone.
Good evening. May I, are you here for an-
No, we're just getting an idea. We're thinking about opening a business.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, thank you. All right, just wanted to make sure, okay. Thank you, guys. I just wanted to make sure, you know, everybody's all set. Please proceed. Identify yourselves for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ben Hildebrand. I work with Furo Engineering. We have an office out of Westfield, Massachusetts. I'm here with Brian Malicki. He's also with Furo Engineering. So we're here today on behalf of Topknot LLC. In general, we're proposing to subdivide the current lot at 210 Moody Road into three properties. The existing parcel is a 21.2-acre site that is partially developed with a 28,000-square-foot warehouse with another 14,000-square-foot currently under construction. The subdivision would create two additional properties with frontage along Moody Road. Lot one would be a 13.5-acre lot that contains the existing warehouse facility. Lot two would be approximately 2.5 acres, and lot three will contain approximately 5.2 acres. The development of the both new lots is undetermined at this time, but conceptual layouts of all utilities and driveway locations have been shown. The proposed subdivision is required to provide 10% of the property area as open space, and this requirement results in a minimum of 2.1 acres. The applicant is proposing a total open space dedication of 7.1 acres. The proposed area of open space has a large frontage on Moody Road and is all contiguous and connected. The site currently contains wetlands along the western and southwestern edge of the property, and this wetland area is greater than 100 feet from the boundary of either of the proposed lots. No work on the new lots would be within the regulated area. Any stormwater discharge from these new lots would be directed through a stormwater management system, meeting state of Connecticut stormwater quality standards. We receive staff comments, and we are working to address them. In general, we are making minor no corrections and revisions to the format of the plan submission. We are also including a sidewalk along Taylor Road, revising sewer connection locations, and we'll be providing a preliminary drainage design for the proposed lots. So we'd be glad to answer any additional questions you guys may have.
Thank you, and thanks for coming today. Thanks for starting this process. Just to keep everybody up to date, I know you guys, this week or last week, went in front of the IWWA, and you still haven't received approval, you're still ongoing for the next meeting with them, so this is kind of preliminary with us also. As I'm sure you realize that we probably shouldn't and wouldn't do any action until the IWWA is complete.
Understood. Staff made that very clear, but we wanted to try to get all the comments out on the table for both boards and address them in one shot.
Sure, sounds like, sounds like a good idea. Thank you. Commissioner Petronale?
Yeah.
I have a question regarding the, on lot three, the drainage system, that they're showing all those lines of perforated pipe for-
Yeah.
For storm drainage?
So-
Is that for storage?
It's basically is for underground storage detention system slash infiltration system. There's a prospective use for this that will be coming before the commission, hopefully shortly thereafter, that this was the design they came up with, was to do underground, oversized stormwater pipes surrounded by stone, basically.
I'm familiar with it. I just, it encompasses a good chunk of the lot. I'm not sure what the proposal's going to be, but, you know, I don't need to get into that, but I just saw it, thought it as odd. It's, you know, what can you build on it, but we'll leave that for another application. So I just want to make sure I understood it, so.
You're understanding it correctly. And I think it's on the record that they were in front of the art meeting for storage use.
Yep. And the, there's an existing barn out on a corner that's part of lot three, I guess, right?
Yes.
And there's that sanitary sewer easement that kind of separates the parcels as well.
That cuts the corner off exactly.
Yeah.
Here's an easement to the town for the sewer.
Right, okay. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I think my main concerns is, you know, per regulations, open space is required here. But I have to be quite frank, this is, you know, we're on a record, it's kind of a preliminary meeting, per se, in a way, because we're going to be coming back and we're going to be working this out. You know, the open space that you're proposing that the town adheres to is just wetlands that's never going to be used for anything. We're not going to use it for recreation. It's just, it's just a dump of land to the town that we're not going to be able to use. It's not going to satisfy any requirement that we have, as far as I know. I haven't heard anything from the conservation committee that they're even interested in that. So do you have any other proposals in your, back of your pocket that you would alternatively propose to us besides that piece of open space that you are proposing to us, which nothing we can do with? I mean, you know, believe me, I'll take it back, so I don't want to be so negative. I don't want to be negative Nancy here. You know, if there was a species on there, something, some habitat that needed to be protected, I would be all for taking that, don't get me wrong. But in this case, I haven't heard anything of that. So do you have an alternative to that piece of land in your back pocket?
If you might go backwards or go forward a little bit.
Sure.
I mean, I understand that this is a large section of wetland that's being included in the open space.
Yep.
But the intention and kind of our interpretation, the goals of regulation is running down the main road.
Yep.
And then there's this nice connection to all the land that's upland and outside the resource area.
Yep.
So that was our thought there, that it's not just unusable land for anybody, because there is that passive connection that would be outside of this.
I guess, okay.
It's a significant area of open space that is required. It's 2.1 acres that would be required.
Yep.
You know, we're, by this chart here, offering up almost two acres of upland.
Yeah.
Staff had mentioned that maybe a part of the open space should be considered in this buffer here along Taylor.
Yes.
I think the applicant would be agreeable to that as well.
Okay, would you mind going back and running that by the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we don't, you know, we don't beat around the bush here. Would you, would you mind going back to the applicant, discussing that, and then to make up the difference in fee of?
So what you guys are suggesting is this view the open space-
And then if that doesn't meet the requirements, we can do in lieu, in lieu of, to pick up the rest.
This all goes back to, as is where is.
Just as an alternative that the board can consider.
And I can assure you, the question would be, is there a barometer on what the fee And I can assure you the question would be, is there a barometer on what the fee in lieu of would be?
I would.
It's defined by statute. So if you read the statute, it's based on a percentage of the predevelopment value of the land. So you'd have to have an appraisal done. And I think what the chair is suggesting is that some fee dedication of land or conservation restriction or whatever the mechanism is for the area at that northeast corner and down, this kind of buffer area, so to speak, with the barn. And then some proportionate to make up the difference, the net as a fee in lieu. So it wouldn't be the complete fee in lieu.
Right.
It would be, so if that, if that ends up being like, if that ends up a half acre, yeah, so if that's a half acre and it's two acres and change, that represents 25, my math is right, 25% of what you need to have. And then the remainder would be, the 75% would be. Unless you want to give more land if it worked and balance those two out. But that statute, and I, it may be actually defined in the subdivision regs as well. There may be a section on.
It's just hard to correlate it to dollars and cents, I guess, for me. But I understand now that you go down the route of an appraisal of fair market value of the land.
Yeah, predevelopment, yeah.
Is there any interest in additional area you're used to offset it or area back here? Or is that all of zero interest?
I'm not, I don't want, you know, again, I'm just, you're asking me as one member.
I guess I'm asking.
As one member, I don't have an interest in that side. But that's just myself, knowing a little bit of that land. I would have an interest on the northeast where the barn area is. And if that doesn't make up the percentage that's needed, you could do a fee in lieu of. I really, that's just me personally. You know, unless all of a sudden I got a letter from the conservation committee that said, oh, Mr. Chairman, you're, you didn't see a picture here, missing something. That's why I don't throw that option away. We might, yeah, we might hear from them. That's their business. That's why we have that committee. But I would like to, I would like the commission to have another option. If you guys would go back to your applicant and see and discuss, see if you're willing to propose another alternative. I guess is where I'm coming from.
Because the lot is so big and so much of it is undevelopable, he's being penalized kind of twice by being required to give an open space as 10% of this, but he can't use any of it.
Yep.
So if you were to put that whole open space on this developmental land, it comes out like two thirds of the lot.
Which is not what I'm asking. Right.
I understand. I'm just telling how where all, everybody's minds.
Exactly. I would not ask that. You're absolutely right. That would be unfair.
Yeah, we're trying to find a common ground. I will, I'll take your question back.
Okay.
Excuse my ignorance because I don't come in Enfield often. The conservation commission is independent inland and wetlands?
Yes. There are, there are, there are commissions that the town council has put together that is in charge of conservation. They give recommendations to the town council, even to us, about open space requirements.
Maybe that's a.
We, well, we don't, you know, if they're listening to this and they want to comment on it, we'll, we'll take their comment if they're watching this on TV. But to involve them now at this late date would just elongate out your, your project. But if they're listening and they want to comment, we'll, we'll take their email or their letter that they give the staff, but all by all means. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? If anybody thinks I'm off base, please speak up. Does anybody have any questions tonight for the applicant at this point? Commissioner Alamo?
So I have a question in the process we're talking about. So if we don't accept that as open space, it just stays with the owner of the current land, correct?
That's correct.
So wouldn't we want that though? Just anyway? Because isn't it a nice wetland and the deer's gonna hang, the deer can hang out there instead of getting whacked on Taylor Road? You know, the deer can hang out in there and then.
I think that's a philosophical question. We probably don't want to have in front of, again.
I'm just bringing it out there. I mean, they're gonna willing to give that land to the town and have wildlife hang out in there.
There's three different reasons why you kind of have open space. And if I, and I wish Mr. Kotay, the president of the conservation committee, was here. So I might be wrong. Basically, you would take it because it's a buffer between a commercial or an industrial area with a resident area, similar to what we had with the, in the Spruce Lane area with the application we had. Remember, he donated that?
Well, the, last week, we had Post Office Road.
And last week, right? That's, that's another good example. Or, again, that's a land that the council wants to accept that. They can butt that into the JFK area. Or there's some habitat that needs to be protected or is used for passive recreation. In this case, this is just my opinion. Believe me, I'm not speaking for the board or for, this is land that's not going to be used for anything. There's no plan to turn it to a recreation area. It's, it's wetlands that now the town has gonna assume responsibility for where it is the applicant to meet our subdivision. So I just want to come out with another alternative. If you don't like the alternative, if the applicant agrees, we can move on.
Want to learn more about before we give up the land. I mean, I'm pretty impressed by what's going on right now with the Noble Gas Station, what they did with that wetland. They moved it and made it a nice passive recreation area. Maybe there's something in the future for the conservation commission that they want to do something for the community there. I mean, before we say no, that's a lot of land to say no to.
Again, I asked them to come back with another alternative. Maybe we'll hear back from Mr. Kotay or the conservation committee saying, oh, no, take this. We want this.
Maybe it could be developed into something for the public to go enjoy.
We have two weeks.
Maybe staff can check before our packet goes out and see if there's anything conservation might weigh in on.
You know, somewhere people can maybe hike or just somewhere for people to go.
Yep. Again, we just want some alternatives.
Thank you.
Yep. Staff, are you all set for tonight?
The memo that we prepared, again, this is kind of top of the waves at this point and John Cabivo, again, has to complete his review. But we did make some note about, in addition to the open space, items that would be bonded. And we did have a little bit of discussion about the stormwater kind of plan. Just wanting to understand kind of the rights and obligations of the different properties in terms of this stormwater concept with the easement. You'll notice that a portion of it is going to be on the western, the far western side and discharging on that lot. So any work within that is gonna require a wetland permit. So there's some kind of mechanics that we need to kind of work out in that regard. But we'll flesh those out with John.
And now, something I'll get fleshed out when the IWWA upcoming.
It's pending before the Wetlands Board right now. That might be a topic. I don't know. I haven't looked at their, the video of their meeting.
Yeah.
But just want to get it out there on the record for now. And it's better, it's better to figure these things out or at least some of these things out at this subdivision stage so that as properties are conveyed, it's very clear to everyone what the rights and obligations were of the different, you know, parties. So that's all that we had on.
Laurie does.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, the fee in lieu of requires 10% of the pre-subdivision development's value.
Okay.
So that's per statute. It's Connecticut General statute, where'd it go? 8-25.
So there you go.
So that would be something where whatever that math came out to be by taking this area out, we might be down to 7.5% of the value.
Right, yeah. Yeah. So and, and, you know, you could do part of one and part of another, as Matt was referring to as well.
And that's by an independent appraiser that we would source or tax assessed value?
You would have to have an appraisal.
Appraiser. You would have to have an appraiser.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Question for staff?
Go ahead.
On a fee, have we ever done that before? I don't remember ever doing that in three, four years I've been here.
There was fees in lieu in the account and that's what was used to purchase the property down in Thompsonville, from what I understand.
Okay.
So it's definitely been done.
So we haven't did it in a long time though, because I'm just not familiar with it.
We have a lot of subdivisions here.
Yeah.
Yeah, just haven't been done in a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there is money.
Otherwise, you're gonna get money instead of the open space.
Right.
Goes to the open space fund.
Right. So you reuse that money to purchase other open space that would be more of value to the town or to the citizens.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner D'Antonio?
Yeah, just going back, I think you, you mentioned it early on in your presentation. Did you say you were, you were planning to add sidewalk along Taylor Road?
Yep.
So I believe it was the city engineer that asked for it to connect, currently there's sidewalk all down Moody. It wraps the corner and stops.
Yep.
This, the hazard of water has.
Yeah, exactly.
So what we've done is we're showing sidewalks here and that does will be constructed as part of the development of that lot.
Yep.
Yep.
So whenever this person comes and develop it, they own the sidewalks.
Okay, great. Okay.
Okay, that's, okay, that's part of the plan. Is that, so is that from our side, is that normal to do as part of the development of the lot? Or can we require it upfront as part of?
Sorry, I missed the question.
Oh, the, so the sidewalks are planning to do as development of the lot. Is that normally what we would do? We would just wait until the development of the lot? Or do we require it as part of the subdivision?
It's, subdivision improvements are bonded and incumbent upon the subdivider to complete. Now, if the subdivider, post approval, wants to have some business arrangement with a potential purchaser of a lot as far as who, you know, the exchange of money, so to speak, for whatever the improvements are, that's not really our particular concern. Our concern is that it's part of the subdivision approval, it's bonded and that it will be completed.
Okay.
So, and they have, you know, technically they have five years to complete the subdivision. This here is a little bit different because we do have a prospective buyer for one of the lots that will be in shortly. And so it's, it's less of a concern, but pro forma, we'll still get the bonding.
Sure. Okay, so, so as far as we're concerned now, we get the bonding?
Right.
Right.
Great, thanks. And I appreciate, yeah, that was a good call because that does extend the sidewalk connection. There's no sidewalks on the other side of the road, which is the residential area. And it'll really connect the residential area to the rest of Moody Road. So I'm glad that was included.
Thank you. All right, seeing, and I think we're all set for tonight anyways. We have some work to do. I think we're gonna, we're gonna table this. You'll work with staff. Any other question, I'm sure to be more than glad to help you out. And thank you for at least pursuing the alternative. I do appreciate that. Thank you. So I will entertain a motion to table PH 30-71.
So moved.
A motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Commissioner Alamo to table PH 30-71. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The director show is unanimous table. Good night, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Now we'll move on to, one sec. Is everybody ready to move on or?
Yeah.
I don't want to go too fast, everybody. We're gonna move on to SPR 1919, 1600 King Street. This is a site plan review.
Yep. Site plan review number 1919, 1600 King Street, application for seasonal farmer's market. Carmen Martin, applicant, Grace and Glory Church owner, map 13, lot 19, BG Zone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please identify yourself for the record. I think the mic is probably still on. I believe, pull it closer to, yep.
Yep, it is. Carmen Martin.
And your address, please?
1600 King Street.
Thank you. Could you, you know, briefly or however long you think you want to take this, describe your application and what you're seeking tonight, please?
Yes. So Grace and Glory Church is looking, seeking to open a farmer's market to provide a safe and welcoming environment for our farmers, community and shoppers where they can connect and benefit mutually. The market will provide local farmers with the opportunity to sell their produce and market to a wider audience. Consumers will benefit from the purchase of a variety of fresh Connecticut grown produce at an affordable cost. And that's, that's generally what we're looking to do. Yep.
Can you just kind of describe, you know, I know, I know your facility from when it used to be the old furniture store.
Yes.
Can you, you know, just overview, give us, describe what you plan to be doing in that parking lot area?
Yes. I don't know if it helps. I do have the drive with the site plan. Do you guys have a copy of the site plan? Okay.
Sorry. We did hand out your narrative, the revised narrative and the revised site plan. So they'll have those with them.
Perfect. Okay. So the way that it is set up is that, you know, traffic, we do have the two flow traffic. The back half along Route 5 would be blocked off and that would be where all of our tents would be located, where all of the vendors will be. Parking will be, we do have a divider in the parking lot, which is like just an actual land, piece of land. We will, the front part of that would be parking for any consumers who are coming in. And then on the left side of the building, there will be restricted area, which will be where food trucks will be. And then porta potties would be on the, the back half of that parking area.
Okay, thank you. Question. Commissioner Higley.
Would you have anything besides fruit and vegetables?
We're thinking about flowers. We're open to anything except alcohol and marijuana.
Thank you.
Well, I'm looking at the scheme here. Give me one second.
Mm-hmm.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. I mean, you've only have, if I look at your scheme, you've probably got 22 parking spaces and only two dedicated for handicapped when you, when you're going to have this event, these events.
So we have 80 parking spaces overall on the site.
So this probably maybe isn't quite the scale.
Yeah, it might not be, it might not be the scale. I don't know if this site plan actually reflects that.
Yeah, maybe 30, maybe 30 spaces. So you're gonna have the tents out front towards Enfield Street?
Yes, on the back half of the, of the parking lot, which is divided by that land right there.
Sir, I mean, I'll take a break while I look. Some of those have some questions. Commissioner Holinsky?
Yes. Would you be considering things like arts and crafts as well? Or would it strictly be food, vegetables, flowers?
No, we're open to all of that. So we're gonna be, we're working with, to, to, to market what we're looking for. But we are open to arts and craft, any type of vendor who might be interested in selling at that time. Obviously, we'll have a max number of booths, but what, you know, it's not limited to just food, yes.
Okay, all right. That's my question. Thank you.
Commissioner D'Antonio?
Yep. The, the vendors, are you expecting their vehicles to park with all the customer parking? Or do you expect them to park alongside their tent? So like tent vehicle, tent vehicle.
Um, I mean, I think that that's something that we would have to talk about. I don't know is there, this is like, we are new to this, so I don't know if there is a preference. I think it would make sense. We do have the space in the back, but I also want to leave space in the back for the tents so we could have them park on the front. What we could also do, that restricted area where the food trucks are, there is a lot of parking over there. So what we could do is have the food trucks on one side and have just the, the, the people who have the tents parking over there because their, their parking, their cars wouldn't move until the entire event was over. So it wouldn't be an issue with traffic going in and out. So we could also have them park on that left side of the church where it is restricted and their cars could stay there to leave space in the back for the tents.
Yeah, that's a good consideration. Yeah, just something, something to think of. And, and as far as loading and unloading, it's, it's pretty normal for them to want to get to that area. So I presume you'll have that area open for the vendors to set up?
Yes.
And then they can just drive out and move their cars and park elsewhere.
And then once they're all set up, we'll have it coned off and keep any other traffic out of there.
Perfect.
Yep.
Commissioner Alamo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this the only drawing that we have that's with this?
It is. It is.
Okay, because I'm looking at the traffic report from the traffic officer. Goes into a lot of detail, but I don't see it on a drawing.
The, the traffic officer's comments came in prior to this plan and they were based on the initial iteration. This is a revised plan that was submitted yesterday. So his comments are basically addressed by this. We haven't had time, it came in yesterday, so we haven't had time to resubmit things out and get comments back on it. But his main concern was, and I think it is addressed in this, is that, and we had multiple communications about this, to make sure that, that the patrons and the booths were segregated from the vehicular traffic. And this is a perfect, I think, solution because that front parking lot is very easy. There's that center island.
Right.
And all you have to do is just block off those two access drives to that front area and it's, and it's secure. And then the rest of it is for parking and of course, the food truck area.
So are you saying that the traffic comments here on this drawing? No.
They appear to be addressed.
They appear to be addressed on the, this, this second iteration addresses the comments that he made, which were based on the initial submission, which had quite a bit of a different layout. And, and it was a concern. And I think we've addressed the concern.
All right, thank you.
Well, I think my, my biggest concern, and I'm gonna address the staff. Do you know of any other organizations that we've granted this type of approval to where they're going to be operating a market every Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 until end of October? Have we done that? Usually they're, they're events and they get to renew automatically. They do it maybe once or twice a year and they get to do it the following year. Nothing changes. I mean, have we approved, this to me is, no, no offense, I know you're a nonprofit, I know you're a church. But this almost seems to me like a business. And we're gonna approve this and they want to do it every Saturday from start, I'm assuming the first Saturday in August to the last Saturday in October.
Well, I think it would be earlier.
And next year and a year and a year after.
I think it would actually start earlier in, in late spring, early, early summer and go throughout the year was what their intention was. I can't say, I, because I don't know whether you have approved something with that type of a schedule or not. The one that I did find and I kind of borrowed a couple of conditions from, there was a winter, a winter farmer's market that you approved some time ago. I don't know if it was years ago, but I don't think it had that many events every, every Saturday. So I mean, it's, it's up to you. I mean, you could, what you could do is if you have concerns, I think you could start with something that was once a month or. with something that was once a month, or twice a month, or whatever interval you think makes sense, and they can come back and they can modify that, if they want to come back and modify that and do it more frequently. That's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I'm, my, because my, I'm being unprecedented.
Yes, no, I understand.
I don't want to start a precedent here, even though I understand you're a church and a nonprofit, you're not a commercial business, but I, that's always, always my concern, I'm thinking about precedent. And, you know, I'm glad we were finally able to get to this point. I know you've been working with staff, and staff's been working with you for the last month or so, and I know you want to get started. I guess I'm looking for some other commissioners' comments here, if they're, maybe I'm being overly cautious.
No, no, I understand. Do you mind if I just say something?
Absolutely, please.
So I do, I do, I, what you're saying makes a lot of sense. I think our, our vision is that we want to be able to offer something to the community. So as far as like financially, we're not looking to make a financial profit, and I think the most we're charging like $40 per booth, right, so it's very small, but the idea being that is we want to start outreach to the Enfield community and really developing a relationship and bringing, and for me, fresh produce, fresh, is a very way, is a good way to do that, but then also to bring in people who are smaller businesses and helping them to be able to grow and develop in the community. That's really the idea. To Mr. Davis's point, if it is something where we're saying we do it two times a month, we're amenable to that. We really just want to get started and offer something to the community, so either one works well for us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Higley?
I agree with the chair. It's, it's a lovely idea for your church, and it's been, you've put a lot of thought into it, and it's reflected in the information we received. However, there's tons of businesses in this town, and we have to be careful if we start something that everybody and their brother can't open up a farmer's market and sell everything under the sun for the whole summer. That's just my opinion. So we have to be careful. Not, 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 not do it, just be careful.
Commissioner Majmadar?
Yeah, I think my question is more for the staff. We do have a farmer's market right along the pond here, behind, and that goes on throughout the whole summer every year, and we've been doing that for many years. So if that's still in progress?
That is not still in progress as we have known it. It has now turned into a crafters' and vendors fair. So it's, it's kind of, if you want to set up a tent, you can, but nobody's really actually running from the town like we did in the past.
Okay. The only reason I ask the question is that could be somewhat of a conflict, that's why I thought I would ask the question, that it's there, it has been there for many years, and apparently it's not being used as farmer's market, it's being used a lot more the craft type thing, but you may have that as an issue as you move forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Holinsky?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment for the, for the audience, and for the home audience as well. Commissioner Alamo and I were having a discussion here, and just to let you know, we were looking for the older layout versus the new one, and we found it. So, so that's what that was all about.
You can clarify.
Yeah.
Sure.
We're a little IT trouble tonight, and old plans and new plans, so we're working our way through it here.
Commissioner Alamo?
Yeah, so, to staff, don't you normally do like a special event, one day, administratively approved?
Yep.
This is, to me, like a, an application to do.
We have to do this the first time, and then, and then, if I believe, we have to do this the first time for an event like this, usually what we do, and then, as long as nothing substantially changes, they get to do it the following year?
Once.
Was it once or twice?
Yeah, it's, I believe it's, it's usually like a one and done for, for what we call a special event.
Right.
This is like a permanent business application, kind of like?
Yeah.
And the other thing I had, relative to comments, I'm just looking over the health department comments on here, those are quite extensive as well. I mean, if you look at them, have you seen the health department requirements?
Yeah, I think there was something about, they asked about petting, was that the one you were talking about, the animals?
The North Central Health District, on your comments. I think you might want to familiarize yourself with those, those look.
Again, if I can, just that goes back to comments from the original application. They probably haven't seen the one that got submitted yesterday, but, like traffic, like traffic, they haven't seen it yet.
Right, but I, their comments are about, you know, the service of health, the service of food.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the project hasn't changed, they're still gonna do the same thing, I think if you, I think the health department's comments are relative here, unless I'm wrong. Staff has the health department's comments relative to the new application?
Yes.
Except for the toilets?
Yep.
Okay, so that's quite a list of things that have to be done.
Right, and those would be done typically post-approval as part of their separate permit process. And we've discussed that, that, you know, they'll need to get to the health department as soon as possible. I don't know what the, what the queue is, so to speak, at the health department for permitting, but they'll need to provide all that information to the health department and get whatever necessary permits.
So.
Then, before, before they can open and operate, so.
Right, so to me, I look, I'm thinking of this as different people coming in and out, right, every week, like, you know, a mobile, the mobile vendors, mobile food vendors?
So I'm, I'm looking, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. You were talking about where they asked about the petting of handling of animals in public, toilet facilities, and then the proposed vendors, is that the sites?
Yeah.
So we did respond, we won't be having any live animals, so that, that, there's no petting or handling of animals, so that's, that wasn't a thing. We do, we did address the toiletry, because there'll be portable potties in the back area, and then the vendors, what we were, with the two, we would have, we were looking at food being the two food trucks, which we, I believe we're under the impression that, once we get approved here, we would then go to the health department, and these vendors, we would work with these two food trucks to make sure they're approved through the health department.
That's how it works.
So, and those are the two that'll be there every, all the time?
Yes, yes, we would, we would work with, whichever ones we work, I mean, mostly we'd have four, maybe rotate bi-weekly, but either way, we would get everyone approved initially, and so that anyone that's on-site would be approved through the health department before they served anything.
Okay.
So I guess basically it comes down to, I'm looking for any questions, whether, if we're, if we are inclined to approve this, and again, I'm watching my words here, I don't want to suppose however everyone's going to vote. Basically, what they're asking for is every, they're gonna run this every Saturday from August 1st to end of October, and this is permanent?
Yep.
It's permanent. Or do we want to work with them to try to limit that somewhat? I'm just looking to see for discussion here, consensus, or get opinions from the applicant, and get opinions from you guys, what you want to do. Again, they're asking for, run this every Saturday from, I'll say August 1st weekend in August to the end of October. Is that, you know, something we want to allow? We haven't, I don't believe we've done that anywhere else other than the town function.
Is it August or June?
August, because they've already missed June.
Hereafter, though.
Right, no, 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 next year they'll start earlier.
They'll start earlier, yeah, next year they'll start earlier.
I think Matt said April.
Yeah, they could start in April, theoretically.
Yeah, we would be thinking, we would be starting more around June annually.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, so, I made a hope to staff, again, like what I was saying before, is this appropriate, or is it supposed to be done the way?
Well, I'll say this.
Is this a zone for this?
The regulations for farmer's markets are in section 6.30.9. There's three sections in that section, A, B, and C, and it's extremely rudimentary, and it provides absolutely no guidance whatsoever about process.
Sorry if I'm laughing.
Or standards or criteria. It really says very basic things, and so I'm at a loss as to what was intended by some prior planning and zoning commission when they put this into the regulations. I spoke to Rick, the zoning officer, whose job it is to interpret the regulations, and he suggested, under the events section, they could come in and make the application. You know, I'll just note something, the section for farmer's markets is in the industrial zone section of your regs.
Right.
I don't know why it's there. It seems to imply that you could only do it in an industrial zone.
Industrial zones.
I don't know. I can't, I wish I could help you. I can't help you.
Is there a state definition for farmer's market, like there is for agriculture?
I think that it's, it's more the fact that the Department of Agriculture and the Health Department has to regulate true farmer's markets. So it, you know, since it's, it may not be on the town green, so we're not the applicant, but we had to apply for all of the permits that this, this young lady will have to apply for as well. So it's, you know, you want to think of this as kind of a special event, but it is more of a, it is a farmer's market, which really is over, is, is really regulated by the state health department, so.
Now, can I ask staff a question? Because I really don't know, so I'm just, I'm thinking hypothetically, trying to find, you know, you know, I'm a compromiser, so I'm always trying to find a way to make it work if we can. Is there a way to only approve this for this year, to see how it goes?
No.
I don't see why not. What we've done with special events is that if, if the event goes well, and we don't get complaints, and there was no traffic issues or anything like that, then we allow it for the next year. So, but if, so if there's issues, we would bring that up next year when they make application.
Commissioner Higley?
We still would be opening this up throughout the town, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, and I know we're, excuse me, trying to be business friendly, but do we want farmer's markets yearly all over town? You know, every business is going to say, oh, well, I have fresh produce, I think that I will have a farmer's market. And maybe it's.
It's in the regs.
I don't know.
It's in an odd place in the regs, but it's in the regs.
Is it in the regs for every single weekend of the summer?
It's not defined.
It doesn't.
Well, we should put that on our list.
I mean, a farmer's market typically is a regular event.
If I'm not mistaken, somewhere it says that the farmer's market has to have some, I think, two, at least two vendors that sell either produce or.
That's, yes, that's.
You do know that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there are standards that, things that are like non-consumables can't be more than a certain percentage of that, so that is definitely in there, so.
It's very complicated for you.
Yes, yes, no, no, that is, our interest is more on the produce side anyway, so that, that is aligned, we are aligned with that.
Commissioner Holinsky?
I was wondering if there might be a compromise position here where we could perhaps start out slow and say perhaps twice a month?
Once a month.
Or something like that, rather than every weekend, just, or every weekend, just to see how things go and feel it out, and if there are traffic problems. I don't, I wouldn't anticipate a lot of traffic problems in that area, it's fairly open. And there was a furniture store there before, so.
Yeah, and no traffic light, yeah.
And Saturdays are busy for furniture stores, so, yeah, there's no traffic light, but I'm not sure that would be necessary.
There's one at the corner with Weymouth.
Yeah, that's right, there's one, there's one there, yeah. So that would be my suggestion, we'd try to, try to limit it starting out and see how it goes.
But that would carry through forever, or would you want to just do once or twice a month for remainder of this year?
I would say do it for the remainder of this year, see how it goes, and we can reevaluate.
Discussion, you know, would you like to make a motion that, one of the site conditions, that this would only occur twice a month from July 1st through October 31st?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor that this event would only occur twice a month, starting on July 1st through October 31st. Is there a second to add that as a condition, as a site-specific condition 16A, you know, whatever, I don't, there's a second by Commissioner Majmadar to add that as a site condition. Any discussion on that?
This is.
So the, the motion was made that this event could occur twice a month, starting on July 1st, 2023, and ending on October 31st, 2023.
July 1st through October 31st?
Yes, there was a motion made by Commissioner Holinsky, seconded by Commissioner Majmadar. Discussion on that?
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Excuse me. So can they have it sequentially weekends, sequential weekends, like the last two weekends in July and the first two weekends in August?
I didn't think we were gonna nitpick that, mostly.
Well, I'm just saying, because we're gonna be the ones that have to enforce it, so we need to know what we're enforcing.
Oh, that's a good point, that's a good point.
About choosing, like the first and third weekend, or the second and fourth weekend, or the second and third weekend, but, you know, not four weeks in a row. We could put that in the motion.
So then you start, okay, so now we're gonna start adding requirements?
Well, you're the one that said, do you want them to do four in a row?
No, I'm just saying, if that's what happens, and, and so if, and, and if we have one every other week, and then it gets rained out, can they go the following week?
No.
This, this is what enforcement is all about, so.
So let me, let me back up. Can we rescind the motion we just made, the condition?
Sure.
I'll entertain a motion to rescind the condition 16A we just did. Motion made by Commissioner Majmadar, seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. When you get to condition 13?
Correct.
Thank you, I didn't see that. Thank you, Matt. We're thinking along the same way, right?
Right.
So let's think about this. Hours of operation shall be 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturdays, starting from July 1st through October 31st, 2023, not to run consecutive weekends. How's that? That, that gives some leeway in there, not to, does that make sense, everybody? So 13 will now be, hours of operation shall, shall be 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturdays from July 1st through October 31st, 2023, not to run consecutive weekends, consecutive Saturdays.
And if they wish to increase it, will they have to come back?
Not this, yeah, not this year.
Next year?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely they will, because that's, that's, that's it, they'll have to.
Right, so, so next year, if everything is successful, there's been no issues this year, you come back and just say, we would like to have this every week, you know, everything went well last year, and then they, they do that consecutively.
It's only for this year.
And hopefully by then, we might have some better regulations for farmer's markets.
So I made a, I made a motion, Commissioner Holinsky seconded that motion for the change to cite condition 13. Any discussion on it? Seeing, and all those in favor of that signify by saying aye. So condition 13 was changed, are you, feel pretty good with it, Matt?
Yep, yep.
Seeing that, is there any other staff have anything they want to add to close this one? Seeing, Mr. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Nope, you gotta read it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve SPR number 1919, application of Grace &amp; Glory, Apostolic Church, Inc., owner applicant for a farm market at 1600 King Street in accordance with the site plan and narrative dated, receive 62123 with the following 24 conditions as modified with the condition 13 earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Motion made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing, and roll call.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Against.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Kieran Majmadar.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
And John Petronella's four.
Let the record indicate that it was passed a six to one. Commissioner Higley denying. You're, it's okay, totally understand. You're, you're all set?
Thank you.
Good luck, you, you know, you know, you know what you have to do. I know you've been talking with staff, so you gotta, you gotta, big haul ahead of you.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, good night now.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Is there any other business? Nothing on the enforcement reports, I don't believe? Correspondence? Commissioners' correspondence?
Yes.
Commissioner Alamo?
Yes, last meeting, we approved the subdivision for post office in Rafia.
Yes.
They said the application was pending. They said the application was pending and it was already in, and the clock was ticking. And I don't see it. It's not here tonight. It's not to be received.
That is, you mean the application for what they want to do on that site?
Right, they said it was in and received, and the clock was ticking.
Staff's clock, but not our clock. Do you want to respond to that, if you can, Laurie or Matt, at all on that, without divulging too many details, please?
Yeah, no, no problem. Okay, receipt. Receipt happens by operation of the statute. Whether it shows up on this agenda, whether it shows up on this agenda or not is completely irrelevant. It's by operation of the law. The law says the date of receipt is the date of the next regularly scheduled meeting of the commission, following the submission of the application to the office. So if an application comes into the office and has 14 copies, application fee, proper consents, copy of their deed, the application is deemed complete, the clock starts upon your, the 65-day clock, we'll call it, starts the date, from the date of your next regularly scheduled meeting, whether or not we put it on this or not. We put these on here, I think, as a courtesy to try to help you know what's coming down the line. Once in a while, because of the way that we function, and it gets pretty frenetic, frenetic in our office because of staffing issues and other things, okay, we miss one or two, and they don't show up on here. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that it didn't get received. It got officially received by operation of the statute and the clock starts. So that's what they were talking about. That application for the development of that particular lot was submitted to the office, it was received by operation of the statute. It, it might not have shown up on, on one of these agendas. So we do our best to try to get things on here. Sometimes applications come in after the agenda's already been posted. We don't amend the agenda typically to just add that. We try to remember and write it down to tell you verbally at a meeting that, hey, just a heads up, Monday, we received an application for such and such, you know.
So what's the status of that, of that?
That application, like any application, what happens is it, it's received, it gets sent out through the Open Gov system, which is our digital kind of review platform, and, you know, all the line agencies review the application, comments are generated, sometimes there's revisions that need to be made. In this case, our, my review will probably start, if not tomorrow, it'll start early next week. We have that application tentatively set up for the 13th to be on that agenda. We think that's probably doable. It's a pretty simple application. However, the complication with this one was they submitted the subdivision application concurrently with the site plan application, and we need to wrap up some of the post-approval tasks on the subdivision, like filing the Mylar, getting the bonds in place, and these kinds of things, before you should really be entertaining and acting on a site plan application for a lot that's within the subdivision. So we've worked with Attorney Pearson and the PE on their side to try to coordinate these, these things as best as we can to get them done. So there's a lot that happens at our level in the office that you really don't have the benefit of seeing.
So by the way they submitted it, it just seemed a little funny, because they were here already for the subdivision and they also started the other piece separately.
Right, right. So what was also strange about that one was they represented the subdivision-
Right.
And they're also the same party that is going to represent the, the site plan application. That usually doesn't happen, it's usually, you know, two different parties doing it. But for whatever reason, that, you know, Mr. Wajnar, property, you know, they decided to, to allow these people to do the subdivision as well as, you know, the site plan. It's kind of unusual, but-
Well, I thought it was a little unusual. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, typically doesn't happen, yeah. It's unusual.
Thank you for the explanation.
Sure, sure. My pleasure, yeah.
Personally, I wish the applicants would not make reference to a future application that might-
Pending, they, they used the word pending.
They kept using the word pending, so.
Kept using the word pending.
I wish they wouldn't do that, because, you know, unless we have it, we don't have it. We don't know what we don't know.
So when I got my agenda this week, you know, I looked and I was, I expected to see it tonight, honest, to be honest with you, the way they were talking.
Well, I think the, the nomenclature, that they're, the way that they're using pending is in the context of it's pending because the clock is ticking, and the clock starts when it's submitted to the office, and the date of your next regularly scheduled meeting starts the clock. That's what they mean. It's, it's pending. They don't mean it's been on your agenda, or it's part of your, you know, it's, the clock is ticking.
Another, another weird one, different.
Yeah.
Never seen that before.
So, so we received that on May 10th, which was, I believe, the same time we received the re-sub, the re-subdivision.
Right, so that's, it came into the office on May 10th, so your next meeting was, I think, the 13th.
The 11th.
The 11th, it's day before. So then the 65 will start on May 11th.
Right. So the problem is, is we can't, we can't even check a, or review an application for something that doesn't exist. The lot is, has not, the Mylars have not been submitted, so the lot doesn't exist yet.
Right, right.
From the subdivision.
Right.
Does that make sense?
So they're using up their clock by the way they did it.
Right, now they can give us extensions.
Right.
We tend to not want to do that, but clients, I've been on the private side myself for a number of years as a consultant. Clients always want it yesterday. They don't want to hear about statutes. They don't want to hear about process and staffing issues or any of that nonsense. They want what they want, when they want it. And so I, I, I can empathize with-
Mm-hmm, I, I hear you.
The P's, you know, they, they say, hey, this is what the client wants. So, okay, well then tell the client they're going to give us an extension, because we're going to run out of time on the first 65.
It was a definitely different approach on this, for me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other correspondents? Director of Planning report. Ms. Whitten.
So, good segue. So, planning department update. We once again have lost a staff member to transfer. Jen McKenzie decided to take a drive over to the WPC. I think she liked the hours better. It's like seven to three, and it was just, she felt it was a better fit. So we are once again without a secretary, our, our front counterperson, the person that does all of our agendas and, and legal notices and so on and so forth. We will, we will be able to find out whether we could advertise, come tomorrow at 5 o'clock. It's, it's first offered to in-house in the same union, so I don't know whether anybody's applied for that or not. If not, then we will be advertising for that come Monday. And, you know, usually it's two or three weeks, you know, notice, and then there's the, you know, applica-, interviewing the applicants and so on. So, you know, it is likely that we will not have this person in-house for at least a month, if not more. So, I guess the saving grace is that August is coming. So, try to find the, the bright light, right? So, and the other thing is that we did have the zoning technician cut from the budget, so we won't be able to be filling that as well. So we will be understaffed for a while, and of course, our priority is always to, to have good customer service and respond to applicants as fast as we can, but having to do secretarial work, I mean, and not to diminish that in any way, shape, or form, it's just time-consuming, so we're going to have to cover all of that. So unfortunately, we may not be getting to customer inquiries or anything like that as fast as we would like to. So, so with that, and after tonight's agenda, we have been receiving a lot of applications that are not complete. So, we may, you know, we, Matt has done yeoman's work, I mean, with some of the applicants even this evening, for months. I mean, we shouldn't have to be doing that, and with that, the applicant, the application changes, the plan changes, and, you know, we have to start the review almost all over again, because the plan has changed, and we've got to get all these new referrals. So we may be coming to you with some incomplete applications on the agenda. If, if it's, it will be your decision, but the, the applicants could ask for a withdrawal, or you could deny the application without prejudice. Now, what that means is then we can work with the applicant outside of the statutory timeframes. We want, you know, when they submit some new app, new application, or a new site plan, they don't have to give us 14 copies, so we can send it out to everybody. And then when they're actually ready again, then you don't, you have the option to not charge the fee again. So we have that section in our code of ordinances for the planning and zoning. So this is not something, this is not what we desire. We really try to work with applicants as much as, as possible to get them in and out as, as fast as possible, but if we don't have the proper information upfront and we're begging for it, 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 we, we don't have the time for that. So we're going to try not to do this. We always try to vet an application way before they submit it with the ARTs and other means, just, you know, having conversations amongst ourselves and, but sometimes it's just going to take, take that, take it off of our plates from the statutory timeframe.
So it's pretty safe to say that an office that traditionally, maybe not over the last year or year and a half, that traditionally had six people, is now down to four. Hopefully to get back to five.
That is correct.
So I just want to make that point, and I want to make that point on the record that a staff that traditionally through the years, majority of the time had six, is now down to four, and, and only the hope of going back to five. And I can personally, I'm sure all of you know, I'm, I'm, I'm here in town hall. You guys know I have an office here, you know, I'm here, you, so you know, I, I'm, you know, I see the office, I go up to the office, I see the work that they have to do, I see the handholding they do to some of the applicants. I'm, I'm not going to mention any of the ones that are going on for weeks and months where Laurie and Matt and Georgie are, are helping them actually fill out their applications in the tug-of-war with the, with the site plan reviews. It's just, it's, it's just gone on way too much. So I think we need to be diligent of that, and when, we need to be a little stronger with incomplete applications when they come in front of us. We, we need to support staff here. The burden is on the applicant, it's not on the staff to do their, their applications for them and make sure that they have the proper architects and engineers, right? It's not on our town engineer to do their work either. And I think we need to be cognizant of that when we get these applications. I'm only saying this because as you guys know, I, I'm witnessing it, okay? I, I witness it, physically and personally witness what's going on in the office and what's happening. So I just wanted to make that point in support of, of staff as we go forward here.
Oh, thank you, and I, I appreciate that, and I think all of the staff appreciates it. And again, this is not our goal, is to, to push, push things back, but sometimes it's just good to be necessary. Again, our primary goal is to be business-friendly, and customer service is, is key number one, so we will continue to strive for that regardless.
And we just wanted, we wanted to give all the commissioners that update, what's going on.
Question for-
Yep, please.
Laurie, can you just not bring it to us if it's incomplete? Just tell them, you got to do what you got to do, and that's it?
If it's received, it's got to come from the app, either the applicant needs to withdraw or the PCC has to deny it.
You have to receive it even if it's incomplete?
It's, it's kind of like one of these kind of like gray areas.
I mean, that's kind of weird. Why would you receive it?
We try to, we try to make sure that it's complete when we get it. However, we don't have time to sit there and make sure that all, all the drainage calculations are there and the site plan is accurate and whatnot. It's, once we start reviewing it, we realize, oh my goodness, you know, they're missing all these things.
Right, so I think, you, you got to be careful about the terms you're using, okay? And this isn't a critical point, it's, but it's an important point. Completeness means 14 sets of plans, an application fee, an application form, copy of the deed, owner consent, okay? Application is complete, it's completeness.
Even if 10 things are left blank?
Right, so what you're talking about is substantive compliance.
Right.
Right.
They're two completely different things. Completeness is completeness. Hey, I submitted my 14 sets, there's a landscape sheet, there's a this sheet, there's a, you know, that's what required. Now, what happens is those plans then are reviewed for compliance in terms of, like Laurie's saying, the drainage calculations, the grading plans, the sedimentation control plans, the whatever, the setbacks and basic bulk requirements and things like that. That analysis is what determines whether or not it complies or not. And this is what I think Laurie's getting to, is that more often than not, the applications that we receive, it might be a complete application, 14 sets, this, that, and the other, but it runs the complete spectrum in terms of compliance. Because once we get into the review, I mean, there's, there's, and we can't talk about specific applications that are pending before you, but, I mean, you, you see, so what we do is we end up having to, like, not, not, not fight, but we spend a lot of time with applicants and their agents, and many applicants don't have PEs or LSs, getting them to understand what they need to do to, to deal with these compliance parts. You know, you need to actually give us a, a plan that shows topo and proposed grading so we can evaluate, and this is what this reg says, and this is what this reg means. So I think the chair's reference to like spoon-feeding, and it's like, it takes, it takes an extraordinary amount of time to do that. So when your staff is cut, okay, and this is what you get pretty much from applicants that are coming in, you, you know, it's, it's the, it's the proverbial balloon, you push it on this side and the air pops out here, and you push it over here and the air pops out of there. There's only so much room inside the balloon for the air. You, you can't, you can't, you know.
I wouldn't think that's part, the, part of your job, if they're not complete, or they're, they're, they're people they hired that have the seals and stamps, don't do their job. But, you know, bring it, well-
In terms of action, we, we can't take, we can't act on plans. You have the right to act on plans. So what we're saying is that, you know, we may need to start bringing these to you to have you to act on them, because we simply can't spend hours and hours and hours.
Weeks and months.
I could, I could, I could understand-
The farm application came in, and it was approved tonight, and it was good, and we worked out some details. They started March 20th.
Right, right.
March 20th, and I was excited, because I thought, okay, you want to start in July or whatever her date was. We got three months to, to work out the bugs and whatever. It took me three months, and there's probably 12 or 15 hours of time I spent on a farmer's market for a church. We have regulation amendments to do. We have important work that is not going to get done, because we spend all our time on chickens and sheds and pools and decks and additions and fences and neighbor complaints and all the rest of the, I'm not saying it's, it's miscellaneous, but in the grand scheme of things, you have to have some priorities, and you have to assign staff to do certain things at certain levels to get certain things accomplished. And right now, basically what we have is we have like four people who are all doing the same thing, just to keep our head above water and deal with the level of service expectations that people have when they walk in that door. They walk in that door, they, I want to talk to you, hey, I'm looking at this piece of land. And we want to-
Make an appointment, come on in next Tuesday, we'll, we'll carve out some time for it. They want you to stand at the counter. I hear what you're saying, and I, I really appreciate that you guys want to really help people. And you said a key thing, people that don't have professionals working for them.
Right.
I can understand that, and I'm happy you do that.
Right.
But people that hire professionals, that's their job. If they don't have good professionals, get new ones. But you shouldn't have to be spoon-feeding them if they're hiring, you know, nice professional guys like him, you know, that have these nice seals and stamps.
Work is always perfect.
Well, I understand, I know care around very well. But I mean, I'm just saying, if somebody's hired a consultant-
Yep.
-that has a license.
Yep.
That's their problem, not yours. But I'm glad that you helped the people out, though. I really have to-
So I think we all, the point here is, you know, Matt and Laurie, or do I even get something from Georgie, are going to have some comments in there about non-compliant applications or not totally, whatever. We just, so read, you know, pick up those comments as you read through the packet that you get here. You'll get their hints that, you know, we might need to be doing some stronger questioning. I think that's-
We have tried to not do this process, because we want to work with the applicant, we want, we want to get a positive outcome as soon as possible.
We want, we want to get a positive outcome as soon as possible. Sometimes it's just not feasible.
Also just, and then I'll get off my stump, but. We're very reasonable. So we understand that if there's an application that's fairly simple, that doesn't require all the site plan details, we'll bring that to you and suggest a waiver of the site plan requirements and we've, we've done that many times. So it's not as, as if we, you know, are taskmasters and you got to check every single little box and, and knit kind of a thing. Oftentimes, there are situations where, yeah, it doesn't, I don't need to see a survey for the back twenty acres if you're only, you know, things like that. So we do, we do work with people, but.
Right.
Totally understood.
I'm glad, like I said, I'm glad you help the people that need to help.
Any opportunities?
Of course we do.
Right, no. Thank you.
Any opportunities or unresolved issues?
Oh.
Nope, okay.
I was just going to give you a quick update on some other activities that are going on.
Okay.
The Hazardville Institute, we are actually seeking a grant, well, Nelson is our grants master. We're seeking a grant for the parking lot in the back. If you know where the Suezac property is, well, there's a Hazardville Institute, which is on this little square on the corner, and then there's a, a strip mall around it with all their parking. And then way in the back, we had, the town of Fenfield has some property, so we're going to seek a grant to get a parking lot put in there with hopefully forty to fifty spaces. So when the Hazardville Institute actually opens, they have a place to park, so.
Questions, open for what?
Well, right now, the, the North Central Chamber of Commerce is looking to go in there, which would be a great fit.
Any other opportunities? Or unresolved issues?
No.
Okay. Administrative approval requests? Administrative approval requests? Okay, you're getting me going on my R eighty-eight jokes.
So administrative approval, there is one application for where, SPR, sorry, SPR nineteen twenty, seventy-two Shaker Road, application for wareho, warehousing inventory for caterer business. It's called Fund Dining, Inc., applicant AJD Shaker LLC, owner MAP seventy-six, lot two forty-three, I one zone. This is literally a caterer that is from Massachusetts, but by law needs to have someplace in Connecticut to store their catering, you know, wares and, and their liquor. So all this is basically a closet where they're going to store their stuff. So we were hoping to maybe do that as an administrative approval.
And that's, that's the first one, I think, that you, we've done of this type, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, but, I mean, quite honestly, if they'd just like gone in and did it, we would probably never know.
Yeah. And part of it is the state of Connecticut laws in it too, is they have to store their, they have to store their alcohol here.
Yeah. So if they're, if they're catering in the state, they need a storage place in the state.
In the state.
Right. We did get a receipt of public hearing thirty seventy-two. This is one seventeen North Street, application for home occupation, truck parking and earth material storage. This is Joseph Licori, applicant, owner, MAP ninety-three, lot fifteen, I one zone. This is the second part of the stipulated judgment that they come in for this application for their construction business.
As far as we know, unless something, if, if the applicant gets ill or something, we are on for next meeting to hear this one.
I think we put it on for the next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, we did do that, so.
I think the commission would like to begin this one and move on from this.
Okay. And, and we've, you know, we've already done, gone through the reclamation part, so. Public hearing thirty seventy-three, three twenty-nine Hazard Avenue, application to convert single-family home to a two-family home. Our Town Home Buyers LLC, applicant, owner, MAP eighty-three, lot two fifty-six, Hazardville, B L zone. And SPR nineteen twenty-one, four Niblick Road, application for a bottle redem, oh, oh yeah, Bottle Redemption Center. Mahir Patel, applicant, Peerless Rentals LLC, owner, MAP fifty-five, lot ninety-one, IP zone. So this is literally bottle recycling, but actually in industrial where it belongs.
New building?
No, I think, I think they're, they're utilizing a vacant space.
Just across from the Cox, I think this might be across from the Cox Cables Building, I think.
Long time vacant.
Yeah.